Good evening. Welcome to the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, February 15, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. In attendance, we have our commissioners. To my far right, James Hines. To my next right is Jeff Cohen. Next to me is James Fitzsimmons. And to my left is Commissioner David Parent, and I am J. B. Evenoyt, Acting Chair for today. And to my far, far left, we have our town employees Kevin Pugini and Cheryl Ann Tubby. First, I'd like to do the pledge allegiance. So if you'd all rise. Thank you. The first order of business is to actually make an announcement first. We will not be hearing special permit, new emissions building, Choate Rosemary Hall, 58, I'm sorry, 59 North Elm Street, application 407-22. The application has been withdrawn and resubmitted yesterday, so we will not be hearing that today. We will be more likely hearing it in March. We also will not be hearing application 401-23, special permit, fill and excavation, Hutton Street, 21 LLC, 1299 South Broad Street. So those two we will not be hearing. Can I ask for a vote on the January 9th minute?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the January 9th, 2023 minutes as submitted.
Do I have a, hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will be now hearing a public hearing. Let's see, item number three, special permit, change of use, Wallingford Center Street LLC, 604 Center Street, application 402-3. Can I ask the secretary to read in the correspondence?
Do you want the legal first?
Yeah, sorry about that. Legal notice and then the correspondence.
Following public hearings will be heard at Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting on Wednesday, February 15, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in Town Council Chambers of Town Hall located at 45 South Main. Application 402-23, special permit for a change of use to turn an office into a residential unit to create a multifamily dwelling at 604 Center Street, R6 Residential Zone. And the correspondence. We have an interdepartmental referral dated submission December 9, 2022, from Scott Shipman, Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer. We have a letter from Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, to the applicant dated December 20, 2022. And we have a interdepartmental referral from the town engineer dated December 9, 2022. We have a zoning investigation record. I guess the item number is 2022-033. And I believe that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Would you like to give us a brief introduction of the project?
Thank you. Yes. Good evening. I'm Jim Lachlan, an attorney here in town. My office is at 221 North Main Street. On behalf of the applicant LLC, with me are members, the two members of that LLC, Weston Ulbrich and Lou Marino. This would change the first floor office where Roz Page used to have her office, next to Silver Pond Apartments, change it from an office into a residential unit. This is an R6 zone. It also has an overlay, is part of an overlay district that allows for multifamilies when the property is larger. So this doesn't qualify under that overlay district, but it's important to keep in mind. It makes sense because Wallingford's town center is becoming more and more residential. It also fits into your regulations that this can change. While we talk about it, I ask that you keep in mind just a few things because that's what, they are the reasons why they fit into your regulations. First off, we would change from a commercial to residential in a residential zone. Secondly, we would be more in conformity with your regulations because only four parking spaces would be required, whereas if you keep it as an office, seven parking spaces will be required. We've been asked to eliminate the parking lot in the front. We have no objection to that, but we will follow your direction, of course, if you want to have it as a condition of approval. There's some good in keeping the parking lot there, and there's some good in removing it. If you remove it, you will be in compliance with no parking in the front yard. If you have it, keep it there. That would protect off-street parking even more in a busy district next to Silver Pond Apartments. Again, whatever you prefer is fine with us. With those in mind, we are here now without a variance for a two-family because one of the sections in your regulation says that if you want to change a non-conformity use to ones that is not any more objectionable, you can come straight to the commission and ask, without having to ask for a variance. You come under the special permit application. And when you're addressing a special permit application, you have to keep in mind the zoning reg, the neighborhood, and the safety. We're reducing, we're changing this from commercial to residential. We're making for less parking. We will remove the lot if you want us to. All not more objectionable than what's there already. So we're okay. As well, those same conditions mean that we fit into your special permit requirements so that, in your discretion, you can approve this knowing that it would survive judicial scrutiny. I'm pretty sure that's all I have for you. I am available for any questions that you might have, as well as Mr. Ulbrich and Mr. Marino.
All right. Thank you. Any commission members have any questions or comments? Or you can go.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just a couple comments. Yeah, I'm in favor of this application. I do have a couple of questions. It's mentioned that there's a sign in front, and the suggestion is that be removed?
There's no objection to that, Mr. Chairman.
I'm actually not sure what the sign is, but, and yeah, I would also like to see the parking in the back. I think restoring the front to the grassy area and having the parking in the back.
Again, that makes sense. Yes.
Be more appropriate.
And I do understand, I do understand the sign has been taken down already.
Okay, great, great. So with that, yeah, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I apologize. I'm flipping through the papers. How many total apartments would be in this property?
Two.
One upstairs, one downstairs?
Yes, and there's one currently upstairs.
All right.
That would remain unchanged.
I guess on this one, you know, I, you know, I know it took a while. I'm not sure how long your applicant has owned the property, but your request tonight is to correct a zoning violation, right? Well, one of the things entered into the record was that the zoning investigation that this, this site is currently in zoning violation. And it is the only violation being that it didn't have the proper approval?
Correct. They did start the work. And I guess I'm being too lawyerly here. We're here so that we don't have to go to the ZBA to correct the violation.
Okay.
We came to you directly without having to go to the ZBA because we're proposing a change to a non-conformity that's not more objectionable than what's there already.
Okay.
And I have an explanation, too, on that violation, if you'd like to hear it. But if you don't want to talk about it, that's okay, too.
I, of course, want to talk about it since I raised it. Sorry.
These guys have their real day jobs, and they bought this together. I guess there was one other project they worked on in town. What's existing on the first floor was what was there before the business. The kitchen is already there. The bathroom is already there. It was a residence before it was a business. It was a dentist's office. Then it was Roz Page. And now they're just bringing it back to what it was a long, long time ago. And they just started. And for months before they were violated, they were calling Planning and Zoning Office for a change of use form. And that's what triggered the investigation. Their own, so they sort of stepped in it in the same time as finding out the procedure themselves. And plus, I attest, they're nice guys, really.
Well, we don't get to vote on nice, but thank you for the explanation. I, I'm familiar with the property because one of the, one of the uses you mentioned, my, my oral surgeon happened to be there. So I know the property. And previously, this commission, most of us knew Roz before she retired. So I support the application primarily to correct the zoning. You know, it's always better when someone asks before getting, going to the zoning violation log, so to speak. So I'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Mr. Commissioner Parent?
I can see from the way the procedures, or from the way the proceedings are going getting the general tone and tenor, we're going to approve this thing. Okay? We would have approved it if we'd been asked back in the summertime.
Correct.
And you would have, my difficulty with the after-the-fact application, even though yours is minor, is that they can be very, they can be very costly. Now, in this, in this case here, it can be very costly. And only they also get the, create the impression to the general public, which I hope that people in this audience, and our audience, TV audience at home are aware, that, you know, you can do something wrong. If anything comes, you know, if you ever, well, you just come in here, a few happy words, and we're done. That's a bad one. That's a bad impression to create. The other thing is that you tend to, and so doing this has other costs. For example, I believe the property, in my readings, I read a little note there that they found that when they did the title search to sell this place, they found the violation. And that was back in September. So I'm assuming that the sale was before that. And by not having that permit, they, first of all, they forwarded, they hazarded the sale. You know, this is, by the way, they're trying to sell this house just as interest rates are going up like this. Investor, if he didn't want to really buy this property, had a perfect out. He's in violation. Second thing is that what would be a few-minute hearing, you know, now, which they could have probably done by themselves, now involves an attorney. Well, that's a cost from then. Costs involved in that. The third thing is that the delay so far, and I think it was about four months or so, right? The money they could have had from the sale isn't there. That's, I mean, that was, I think it was a substantial sales price. And I think, you know, just take the interest on that investment that you could have had. Four months of interest on that is a substantial sum of money. And finally, when they finally do close, they're not going to get as much money as they would if they sold it back in the fall because now they're responsible for the additional four months of taxes. Now, they're all aware of this. But the thing I think is important, that the general public sees this, they know, is that, you know, when in doubt, go down, get the application in your hand, fill it out, get it done. And you save yourself all sorts of, oh, yeah, the last thing here is we're charging you twice as much for a favorable ruling as you'd gotten before. So I just would hope that people realize that even in a situation where, you know, we would have voted for it, and, you know, that it can be costly when somebody fails to comply before, on time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just say I'm generally in support of this. I would say that front lawn, would like that restored. So to our staff, anything on your desk?
No, I have no further comments.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak for or against this? If not, do you have any other comments?
Nothing. Thank you.
From the applicant? Nope. All right. Then I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays or abstentions? None? All right. Do I have an action on the application?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the commission approve a special permit requested for Wallingford Street LLC located at 604 Center Street for conversion of an office to a multifamily residential use on plans entitled Compilation Plan Prepared for Wallingford Center Street LLC dated 2/5/22, subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments in an inter-office memorandum from the senior engineer Scott Shipman of the Wallingford Water and Sewer Department to the Planning and Zoning Department dated December 22, 2022. Number two, comments from the office of the Wallingford Town Planner dated 12/2022. Number three, that the front parking area is removed and restored to lawn, and the current sign is removed before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And finally, number four, six copies of the approved final plans be forwarded to the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Office.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Start, do you vote for my far right, Mr. Hines?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you again for your time.
Thanks so much.
Moving on to the next application, 403-23, special permit, change of use, B. Kaplan, 28 South Whittle Sea Ave. Please come up to the desk.
I'm not part of this application, but I'd like to address the commission for 30 seconds.
Let us get through our, our process through, and we'll let you do it.
We were number two on the list, and you just announced that we weren't going forward.
Okay. Then I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Would you like to read the notice and also the correspondence, please?
Yes. Following public hearing, 403-23, special permit for a change of use at 28, 28 South Whittle Sea Avenue to change a residential property to a religious meeting, Assembly Center, R6 Residential Zone will be heard at the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Meeting Wednesday, February 15, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Council Chambers of Town Hall at 45 South Main Street. Correspondence. I have an interdepartmental referral from the environmental planner dated January 5, 2023, received January 20, 2023. Memorandum from the Wallingford Fire Department dated January 25, 2023. And an interdepartmental referral dated January 5, 2023, received February 1, 2023, from Scott Shipman, Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Applicants are here. Give us a kind of a description of the project and anything that you would like us to know.
Okay. Good evening. Thanks for being here. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to share what we hope to be able to do.
One thing, just for the record, name and where you're from.
My name is Rabbi Baruch Kaplan. I live on 22 South Whittle Sea Avenue. Here with me is Ilia Moerman. He is a contractor to work on the property. So my wife and I were residents in Wallingford for the past 18 years. We opened an organization called Chabad Jewish Center. And our goal is to have a, provide opportunities for people that like to learn more about the Jewish heritage, to have a place where they can come together, they can study, they can learn, celebrate Jewish holidays, et cetera, et cetera. For the past, since 2008, we've been operating out of a storefront on 174 Center Street. And then due to COVID, we closed the storefront. And for the past two years, I've been teaching on Zoom, having people come to my home, and meeting there, inviting, you know, people to, the organization has been continuing, but we haven't had a proper space. We've purchased the house next door to me. So I'm 28, 22 South Whittle Sea. This is 28 South Whittle Sea. And the hope is that we can move it from a multifamily residential into a meeting space for our community. I think it's important to note that my day job, I spend my day in Orange, Connecticut. I'm a principal at the Southern Connecticut Hebrew Academy. So most of the activities that happen in Chabad are either Friday night, Saturday day, or small meetings where people come to my home to study and learn. So we're not the type of organization that runs throughout the day. You know, I'm working all day in, in Orange. I think it's also important to note that we've been operating for quite a while, and we know how much parking we've had in the previous center. So Center Street, it is a main street, but there were also, were only four parking spots in the back. Traditionally, the classes will have about 10 people that come to, to learn. Some of them walk, some of them drive. We have currently four parking spaces in the driveway, and we are hoping to provide another four parking spaces as well. That's without my home, which is next door as well. I, I think it's important that, and I'd like my neighbors to know this, is that the character of the house will not change. We are by definition a family organization. It's not a traditional synagogue. And I think that it takes the question of who lives in that house. Until now, it's been renters, you know? They come and go. And I live next door. To me, it's very important that I love our community, and I want to retain the character of the community. So that's something that's important to me, and, and I will be the next-door neighbor. So I care about the community deeply. I guess that's it.
Thank you. Bring it back to the commissioners with any questions or comments. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm fine with this. I actually have just an administrative question because in our motion, I don't believe I received comments from the town planner dated 12/20/22.
Those were the other application?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
I think I missed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the wrong. Okay. I'm all set. I'm, I'm good with your app. Thank you.
Do we have any other commissioners? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
I just want to clarify. So the entire use of the building will be for assembly. There'll be no rental apartment on the second floor?
That is correct.
So you're abandoning the residential use?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Mr. Pugini?
No, I believe they've answered all my questions that I had previously. So I have no further comments or questions.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any, I see one waving back there, and it'll be next. Yep, come on up. Just make sure for the record, name and where you're from.
I'm at Centino, 17 South Whittle Sea. I live diagonally across from Rabbi. We've, I've known him for how many years you've been here. I just have some questions as far as, you know, parking is a
I do.
crazy on that street. It's a one-way. Part of my concern is safety, because I know some of, your congregation does not drive from Saturday sundown to sundown, between Friday and Saturday. You have, there, I know there's a lot of people come from out of state. I mean, I don't, I admire what you do. I don't want that, but I'm worried safety-wise. My driveway sometimes is so tiny, I can't get out. It is one-way, and it's been that way for probably 18 years. There are still people driving down the wrong way. As far as getting fire, ambulance, police through, sometimes just with our general traffic is hard. We do have a parking lot next door, but that is private property. There is part, I don't know if you would direct people to go over. I'm more concerned with the safety and with that part of it, and so that I can still get in and out of my driveway. We have children, I mean, you have children, I have children, I mean, we have grandchildren. It's just I'm trying to figure this out. I just happened to see the sign go up yesterday, and I went, oh, let me check. Or this morning, I went, oh, it's tonight. So that was a little surprising to me as well.
So I, I appreciate your questions.
Who knows the craziness?
And I, I'm completely aware. So here, here are the couple of things that I, that I think is important that I make clear. Number one, we have currently that one parking, that driveway that goes all the way up.
And behind the red house.
Correct.
Okay, yep.
There will, there is enough room to create another driveway going up on the other side.
Okay.
Which, by any estimates, is at least eight cars right there.
Okay.
The other thing is, we have in the past used that corner parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm willing, and I'm willing to get permission.
Yeah.
And worked through with that. We've actually gone over to them and said, you know.
And on Town Hall here also, we've got the green lines up here, and behind Holy Trinity as well.
So for me, it's going to be very important that my community that comes understands that either they're parking in the parking lot or on the street on Center Street.
Okay.
We do not have, I know we have, I have relatives, personal relatives that come from here.
Well, yeah, and then I see. So I'm like, okay.
That's true.
Where are we going to work this?
But the people that come from our community are, are locals.
Okay.
They know, they, they know the place. And it's important. You will, I'm going, there'll be a special point made that either you park there, and if there aren't spots there, we have an entire Center Street with parking lots.
I also know there's going to be probably like five or six college kids that are coming up. Because your house, my house, and one other house are the only single-family dwellings on that street. And now with you not having the upstairs of the red house being residential, so that limits. But there's three family, on, two-family next to you, there's three family on the other side. I mean, we're a multifamily block.
Hundred percent.
Like a half a block. And there was, there was controversy when it went one-way. I'm, I'm definitely can see it going. I mean, and I, I just want to make sure everybody's safe. We have an idea, like I can get in and out. I mean, I know there's at least five college students that will be back come May, so that's going to be more parking, more cars. The neighborhood has grown up, so everybody's driving. Everybody's got a car. Most of the houses do not have driveways accessible for their renters. We have, we have a driveway, but we also sometimes have five cars. So it doesn't all fit in our driveway. And you're running the same thing. Your kids are getting older. I see them driving. I'm like, no, like, no. So I'm just trying to point that out, that there is that issue of, you know, definitely more safety concerns than anything else.
On that note as well, think about the fact that currently we had, we would have two tenants.
Yeah.
Which were four, four cars. They won't be there most of the week, which means the average night, you won't have people parking there anymore.
I mean, but again, like on the weekends, when you're doing
Absolutely.
I mean, that's my party time. This is my weekend time. You know, it kind of all falls in during the week. I'm in school, you know, you know, doing that. I teach, we're back and forth. So there's, all of that kind of goes in. Your quiet, our time is our busy time, and then vice versa. So just to let you guys know that, that part of South Whittle Sea is a pain in the neck, parking-wise.
Thank you. Next? Yep. Just do me a favor for name, for, get closer to the microphone so that, that, need it for the record.
Pam, I live at fifty-eight South Little C. I live at the corner.
Oh, sure, to Mike.
I'm sorry. Our biggest problem is, I know where he lives. I walk past his house all the time. We have the problem, like, his side of the street is the dentist's office. They take up most of the street. Plus, they park on our side of the street where there's no parking. So we all have a hard time with, not just like with your problem. There's no parking because, like she said, there's no parking. So the whole parking situation, because the people refuse to park in the dentist's parking lot. So their side of the street is no parking, because there's only one side parking. So it's all, it's all the parking. So is there like maybe something we can do to help him besides like, you know, like we can't get out of our driveway because no parking? You know, they park where they're not supposed to park, you know? He knows, you know? So it's crazy. The parking is crazy on that side of the street.
That's why my first thought here was about the parking.
Yeah.
Is thinking about, and I'm a neighbor.
Right. No, I walk by his house all the time, and I see.
We're talking about hopefully having at least eight parking spots.
It's, I see, I see the dentist people in the office park up there, and it's limited parking on that one side, and it's crazy. It's that one side of the street. It's because it's one, it's very narrow, and it's really crazy, that one side. You know, like she said, it's really, really bad.
Thank you. One second. We do public comments, and I'll have you respond. Anybody else right here?
Yeah, my name's Francis Palmer. I live at twenty-nine South Little C Avenue, right across, just about across the street from this gentleman. I'm not in favor of this at all. I don't believe we need a religious center in my residential area where I've lived for forty-three years. There's the parking, as you've heard the ladies talk about, is crazy, because there's no parking. And I've watched people double park. People go the wrong way. I've watched people stop their cars, unload, and get out of their cars and go in their houses on the wrong side of the road. It's really not a place that you needed people coming and going. This say nothing about my value of my house. I can imagine when I go to sell it and people look across the street, see a religious center, well, that must be a selling point. I don't think so. So I have nothing personal against this man. I wish he'd go back to Center Street. Sounds like a good idea. It doesn't belong on South Little C Avenue. It's a residential area. It's a two-family home. I've watched that house for forty-something years, and it always had great people live there. And this man, I don't know, and I'm sure he's a great man, nice man. I have no idea. I just don't believe it belongs in our neighborhood. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Jennifer Yandolphy. I live at seventy-six South Little C. I am, I'm a landlord, and my parents have owned the property for forty-six years, so we are part of this community. Having a commercial type of entity in a residential area, especially that side of South Little C, it's very, I would say, it's just too tight of a space. I don't oppose what you want to do commercially, but commercially, not in the center of the street. There's commercial buildings on every corner of South Little C, South Little C Ward, then South Little C, South Little C Ward on the other street, South Little C Prince. They're corner, corner lots. If this was going to be at the corner of the street, I'd say, yeah, go for it. It's in the middle of houses. So like everyone's been saying, it's this traffic, it's parking. It's a one-way street, parking. We didn't have a lot of snow this year, yet last year we did, that parking got even tighter. I know that people are allowed, you know, I always tell my tenants, you know, park at the park where you can if there is a parking ban, but you have to take that into consideration as well. So I, I, I like having the diversity, and I, and I lived in Stanford for years. So seeing another synagogue come up here and diversity to Wallingford, that's amazing. I just don't think South Little C is a little bit too tight to have this and to have this amount of people going back and forth.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I guess.
Do me a favor, say it again.
Aunt Cosentino, seventeen South Little C.
Thank you.
Just when it went one-way, and you had brought up a good point about parking only on one side, please do not revisit parking on both sides, because you cannot back out of driveways. And that, I fought very, very hard to get not done fifteen, eighteen years ago, because you cannot take out, I mean, I had a small car at that time. With the size of the cars and everything else, you cannot back out without hitting, taking a car across the way. That's something that you really, and that has nothing to do with you.
Just so you, we don't have jurisdiction on that either.
All right. Well, I just put it out there too, because it's just true. It's tight, and it's just something to think about, and it is in the whole thing. But I just figured I had a...
Thank you. Any other? I'm going to bring it back to the commission.
Can I respond, or do you want me to?
Yeah, I'm going to have you respond. One second. I just, any commissioner members have any other questions? Correct. Would you like to respond?
Yeah, so I'm taking, I'm trying to take all of this into account. I'm a neighbor there. I am the closest neighbor next door. And, you know, the first thing that I thought about is how would we work parking? Because I don't want this to be something that affects my neighbors in a negative way. And that's why initially, the first thought was, how do we put enough parking right there? The second thought was, how do we make sure that our community understands that if there is no parking, they park on the street, or they park, there's numerous parking lots within a hundred and two hundred feet. With regards to the worth of the house, I think, I think they'll find that the house will be extraordinarily well-maintained. The facade is going to still look like a single-family home. It's not going to take a commercial look to it. We're not looking to change that at all. And I, and I think it's going to be something that will actually, the worth of the house, I believe, will raise from what we're doing right now. We're taking an old house. We're going to restructure it. It'll be certainly a house that its resale value will go much higher, I believe, than what it is now.
So just do me a favor, name, where you're from.
Sure. Ilya Mowerman. I am not a Wallingford resident. I used to be, about ten years ago. But I do assist services to Rabbi. I've known the rabbi since he's been here in Wallingford eighteen years. I will say this, as somebody that assists his services, usually on just high holidays, as we go to his services, we've always looked to not, you know, how can I say this? Create a nuisance to the community. We've, I've gone to his house numerous times where, let's say a Shabbat dinner, there's a few people invited, so forth. We park on Center Street. We know that South Little C is, you know, it's residential, lots of people parking on the street. You know, I don't know. I think that we make a very conscious effort as to not disturb the neighborhood. And again, the intention here is to make whatever the dwelling is nicer.
And I just add one little thing is, I remain, I will remain a neighbor. I'm not going anywhere. And I'm always open to hearing if there's an issue or something that I can fix.
Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, I want to start with the question through you to the town planner. So this application is, right now before us, is a special permit to request to convert to a multifamily?
No, it's a converting a multifamily to a religious.
Sorry, to a religious assembly center. We don't have a site plan, correct?
There is. Should be.
I have the property served a, I guess what I'm looking for is, and I was going to reference to you, is appears the Office of the Fire Marshal went out to the site, and he says, "Plans shall be submitted for the use and layout of the building." And so that was the Fire Marshal's comment in his memo, which was shared with us, and that was from two weeks ago. So that was made me think, so the Fire Marshal, in light of the information regarding the traffic, the parking challenges, I was thinking, I don't see a parking plan. Yeah, correct?
Yes, I think I couldn't classify it as an use that would fall into these. I looked at it as a use not listed above as determined by the commission. So since they have an existing facility in close proximity, and they have eight current spaces, they were proposing eight spaces for this facility.
Yeah, you know, and again, through you, Mr. Chairman, I guess what I was thinking is, okay, first, they're going to request a special permit to change the use and then come back with a site plan. Because the way it's on the agenda, it just asks for a special permit. It doesn't ask for a site plan approval. I know it's an existing structure, but it's converting from residential to a religious assembly center. So as the last applicant there, you know, with the apartments, they showed the parking plan. So I don't see a parking plan.
Yeah, if you'd like them to show a parking plan as far as the...
Do you have one? Or no, nothing was submitted? Okay. Because, and again, I think, thank you, because I think through the applicant, he mentioned the plan is to have eight parking spaces. And, you know, the challenge here is, is most of our religious uses in town are in residential zones. Most of our schools are in residential zones. I used to live three doors down from Wallingford's synagogue, so, you know, and challenging parking during heavy use, just like neighbors who, you know, live near any church, you know, during weekend services. So I'd like to see a parking plan as part of this application. I heard the, I heard the public, and I think, you know, when I was living down in North Orchard, the street was one-way. So I hear you. When you start talking about one-way parking, one-way street, I get it. Parking on the street, I, everything you said, you know, I brought back for me. But I guess, I think for knowing the area, knowing that it's going to convert, you know, from residential to a different use, I'd like to see a parking plan before moving forward. But that's why I was asking the town planner, because the application I see is just for a special permit versus a site plan. So I don't know if I'm being technical, thinking most times I would see the site plan, excuse me, special permit to be granted, and then we would vote separately on the site plan, so.
Right. That's why I just wanted to open the public hearing, get your perspective on it as a commission, and see how many parking spaces would be required, since I don't think it falls technically under a church or just a regular assembly hall. It's sort of in between. So if you can maybe represent better as to where, you know, parking can go, where it won't be an issue, then it's certainly, you know, within your right as a commission to do that, so.
As I said, you know, thank you. Because the Office of the Fire Department said plans shall be submitted, I was thinking, okay, it's a two-step process, so we're at the...
Well, he always requires a floor plan before the issuance of a CO, just to make sure, you know, safety-wise.
Safety first. Okay. Well, I would be, I would like to receive a parking plan a little more detail regarding, as the Fire Marshal said, plans shall be submitted for the use and layout of the building, and I support that request before being able to move forward.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just to follow up on the, on the parking, because, yeah, it's absolutely a concern. But I thought, I heard you say that, you know, there's an existing driveway in the property, and you were going to build another driveway? Did I hear you say that?
I would like to, yeah.
Okay.
There's room on both sides.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Okay, so that would, you know, give a few more spots as you, you know, mentioned.
The neighbor had recently put up a driveway right there, and we had discussed the idea of enlarging that driveway, and enough for two cars easily to go up back and forth.
Right. And then, perfect. So, yeah, I think, you know, having a parking plan as part of this should be pretty straightforward, I would think.
Any other commissioners? You heard kind of what the commissioners are looking for for the next meeting, which is in March. I don't know if we have anything else?
Just as a question, so to clarify, the parking plan would be resubmission of...
Do me a favor, name.
I'm sorry, Ilya Mowerman. So the resubmission would be, that's basically something similar to that, where you, the site plan illustrating the parking?
Where parking would be, yes.
Okay.
On site.
On site, right. That's it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to continue this?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I move that the commission continue the application for Kaplan at twenty-eight South Little C Avenue to our March meeting.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays, stentsions, motion carries?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving back to application number two, or on the public hearing, special permit fill-in excavation, Hutton Street, twenty-one LLC, twelve ninety-nine South Broad Street, four oh one dash two three. Can I ask Commissioner Cohen to read the public notice and all correspondence received?
Yes, the following, public hearing, four oh one dash two three, special permit excavation and fill for approximately three hundred cubic yards of earthen material at twelve ninety-nine South Broad Street, RF forty zone, will be heard at the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission meeting Wednesday, February fifteenth at seven PM in the Town Council chambers of Town Hall located at forty-five South Main Street. And I will dig up the correspondence. Give me a second. I have a interdepartmental referral dated December two, twenty twenty-two, received January third, twenty twenty-three from Allison Kapachinsky, town engineer. I have another interdepartmental member from the Assistant Fire Marshal, dated submission December second, twenty twenty-two, received December, looks like eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Appkins, if you'd like to, is this application still in Wetlands?
It is, yes.
Just for record, name, where you're from. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good evening. My name is Attorney Carl Landolina from the firm of Fagie and Landolina, four eight seven Spring Street in the town of Windsor Locks. I'm joined to my right by Sarah Castaglioli of, I'm sorry, there's an A at the end of that name. I should know better, from the firm of BL Engineering, who is the project manager and engineers. And seated somewhere in the audience is the representative. He's there. It's Mr. Nicholas Plummer from Hutton Build, which is a commercial building operation out of Chattanooga, Tennessee. So just very briefly, thank you for hearing us. We understand that there will not be a vote tonight, because you need a report, final report from Wetlands. Our next meeting with them is March first, and we're hopeful to get that final approval from them. This is a property on the Meriden-Wallingford line. The existing building, which is a banquet facility, actually is located on both sides of that line. Some of the building's in Wallingford, some of the building is in Meriden. Some of the building's in Wallingford, some of the building is in Meriden. The plan here is to demolish the existing building and to construct a car wash facility. All of the proposed improvements, all of the impervious surface, the car wash facility, the parking areas, the drainage structures, everything, is to be located in the town of Meriden. We have approval from their Wetlands Commission and from their zoning board of appeals for a special permit. The only activity that's proposed in Wallingford is to take up the asphalt that, part of the building, and the asphalt that's located in Wallingford, put topsoil down, and to put lawn and some landscaping in there. And as we get closer to the Wetlands, there'll be a conservation seed that's planted there, and a no-mow area. So, and we're still discussing those details with your Wetlands Commission. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah, she can explain the details of the project.
Over here, so I can flip the board for you. So this illustration you can see is...
Jimmy, sorry to interrupt, for direct...
Stagliola, licensed professional engineer from BL Companies. This plan you can see is the existing conditions of the site. This line right here is the town line, so the property falls between both towns. The existing building also straddles that line, so this orange color is the building. So it is largely paved right now. The Wetlands are to the rear of the site, there's two separate Wetlands. But the site is almost entirely parking at the moment, with two different curb cuts, one in Wallingford, one in Meriden. And then this plan demonstrates the proposed design. There will still be two curb cuts, one in, one out, but those are both on the Meriden side of the lot. So the curb cuts on the Wallingford side will replace the curb there, so there's no access. And this lighter hatch is the lawn seed, and this is the conservation seed mix, which has some pollinator plants, and as well as some trees and shrubs towards the rear of the site. But there will be no building on the Wallingford site. I can go through the utility plans, or any other grading and drainage plans, but those are all located on the Meriden side of the site.
Any commissioners have any questions? All right, thank you. Any more in your presentation?
No, I have nothing further.
Okay.
The chairman, really, it's pretty simple, you know, pretty simple plan, as far as what's going on in Wallingford.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on it? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Any commissioners have anything else? Our town planner?
No further comments. Generally, though, when something is not going to approve by Wetlands, the applicant lets me know that they want to present, so just, next time, just inform me, I guess. I apologize if there was confusion there.
That's quite all right, we appreciate you adding us or taking us up tonight. Obviously, we're under contract, we've got tight timeframes with sellers, and so we appreciate you hearing this part of it. We just wanted to hear if you had any input, and next time, hopefully, we'll have that Wetlands approval, and we'll communicate with staff. I'm sure they'll know themselves on March 1st whether we got our approval or not.
Commissioner Cohen?
I'll just make one comment. I think, just, we'd like some nice landscaping on the Wallingford site, so...
Yeah, I think your environmental planner has asked for some additional plantings, and we're waiting for her final, final report, so...
Perfect. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Action to continue? Mr. Chairman Fitzsimmons?
Mr. Chairman, I move we continue the application for a special permit fill and excavation Hutton Street 21 LLC at 1299 South Broad Street to our March meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Just for your record, that's which date exactly? March?
March 13th. What, it's 2nd Monday?
Yep, 13th.
March 13th.
Yeah, all right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Yeah, you too, thank you, Mr. Peggini.
Let's see, we are on the last public hearing, and that is proposed text amendment 6.35, moratorium on warehousing, warehousing distribution in all zoning districts in town, application 901-23. Can I ask Commissioner Cohen to read in the legal notice and also any correspondence?
The following public hearing, 901-23, proposed text amendment to add section 6.35 that would enact a townwide moratorium on warehousing and warehousing/distribution uses will be heard at the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting of Wednesday, February 15th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Council Chambers of Town Hall located at 45 South Main Street. For correspondence, I have a memo from the Economic Development Commission to Planning and Zoning Commissioners from Hank Baum. And I believe that's all the communication.
Thank you very much. Mr. Peggini, you have anything on this text amendment?
Yes, so we've been discussing this already, so we're hoping to set up a workshop in March with options, ideas. We realize that there's a lot of emerging warehousing-type uses that are, you know, coming along, that I think we should look at geographically, you know, district by district, and see what we should allow, what we shouldn't allow, and really do a comprehensive analysis of, you know, how we look at warehousing, because warehousing is a very evolving subject. So I think we need to, you know, just allowing warehousing as a general use doesn't work anymore. So I think this will, I think we need to work as quickly as possible on this, hopefully it won't last six months, but I think it's necessary to, you know, just evaluate where it should be allowed, where it shouldn't be allowed, where, you know, either by special permit or with certain restrictions. So I'm in favor of this, but I think we need to work as expeditiously as possible in getting this figured out.
What are we thinking for, like, time?
Right now, I haven't until six months, but I was hoping, you know, to hopefully repeal it sooner if we make progress. I was thinking of a workshop for mid-March, somewhere around there, so I'll be sending out a poll to get your time and availability, and, you know, if we have to have multiple workshops after that workshop, then that certainly can be something we could set up.
Commission members with any comments? Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I am in total support of, you know, this moratorium. I think, based on, you know, the recent approval of a 450,000-square-foot warehouse had challenges for us, and I, quite honestly, I don't, I'll speak for myself personally, I wasn't thrilled with, you know, the way the regulations did, the current regulations did allow this, you know? And I agree with Mr. Peggini completely that there are many, many different types of warehouses, and I think we need to be cognizant of that fact, and not to rehash the last meeting, but, you know, I personally brought up a lot of differences, and, you know, the sizes of the warehouses, you know, based on, you know, square footage, the height of the buildings. So there's a lot of variables that go into, you know, exactly, you know, what a warehouse is going to be, and, you know, I think our regulations, as Mr. Peggini said, you know, should fit, you know, the different types that are now, you know, in place, and potentially more differences to come in the future. So, yes, I am in support of this. I think six months would be a good timeframe, and, you know, taking into account the letter from EDC, if we, you know, finish this up in a timely manner, which I think we can do, you know, we could, you know, end the six-month moratorium earlier. So I do support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners, or you go out to the public? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Right. Thank you. I guess, if I heard the six-month, my question would be for the town planner, what would be the earliest start date, and what would be the proposed end date if we used your six-month period?
The proposed end date is July 15th, but I believe the, if it gets enacted tonight, it goes out legal notice, so it would be, I believe it would be tonight, actually, just because a moratorium will allow you, once it's enacted, to, I'm trying to think of what the date it would be on. We usually have Mondays, and it would be sometime either Friday or next week, whenever the legal notice goes out. I don't remember from a Wednesday meeting as to when the paper, I believe it's Tuesday.
If I might, the chairman and I were just discussing, so the previous applicant that got approved, when the legal notice is published with our decision, that's when it be...
Yes.
Okay, so that's the same date, and my understanding is, it's five days from action, but that's why I, in order to move forward, which is a whole separate question, I need a start date. So is the start date next Wednesday, because Monday's a holiday, today's Wednesday, I, you know, I don't want to make a mistake on the start date, because the end date is open-ended, but it's the start date, you know, it's effective, you can't say immediately as possible, it's got to be a calendar-specific date.
I believe it's Tuesday, let's just say the 22nd, then.
All right. So 2/22/23 is the start date? Or no, earlier than 2/22/23, if you need another day? Is that, I mean, I want to provide some wiggle room, if you will, but the wiggle room would be for getting it in the paper...
Yes.
...and getting it become effective, so we can't say effective tonight, because it can't be in the paper until...
Right.
Okay, so, thank you. And then, Mr. Chairman, I guess, I read with interest the letter from the EDC, and I get it. I guess the best way to say is, I get it, and I do think that this is something that, given where we are, you know, we always talk about our regulations being a living document, and we're making changes as appropriate. I think the enactment of a moratorium for a period of no more than six months will allow the commission and, you know, the EDC and any other interested party to allow us to kind of review any potential changes, additions to our current regulations. So I do support taking a, putting in a moratorium on warehouses, or warehousing, and then allow us time to work on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Parent?
Yeah, I'm really in favor of this, and the reason why is, when you look at it, the different types of warehouses, all of them, you know, if you're following good business practice, you need to get it, you need to turn over the stock, you don't make money just by storing things for months or years on end. And so, given the inherent busyness of a warehouse, yeah, I think, I think that we're on solid ground deciding, you know, where we can put these, and where we can allow warehouse, and where we can take into consideration the fact that it's on the surrounding neighborhoods. So, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm very happy to support this moratorium.
Thank you, and so am I. Let's go out to the public, we'll start over here. You know the rule.
Joe, I'm sorry, Joe Mira from Economic Development Commission. First of all, I appreciate what I'm hearing this evening, that the time factor of the moratorium will be as minimal as possible. I want to compliment the commission, because it's been longstanding that this is a commission that looks forward to welcoming business to the area. My concern personally is that by putting moratorium in the papers, people may get the wrong impression of Wallingford, that we're not welcome, we're not open for new business, and, which, again, just hearing from the feedback from the commissions and town planners, that's not the case. We're trying to address a problem of an evolving industry, and we're trying to meet the standards that the town needs to make it coexist with our current community, which I can accept. But again, I look forward to a speedy turnaround, and if the papers are listening, this is not a negative impact, it's just addressing a problem of an evolving business that needs to be addressed properly. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Right on this slide, right over here.
Good evening, Bob DeMayo, Marie Lane. I am, you probably know, in full support of this moratorium. I will say candidly, I'm not as excited about the, let's get it done in six months at any clause. I know that's definitely probably enough time to get it done, but the notion of an artificial deadline, not knowing for sure what we could turn over, state, you know, I don't know how deeply we're going to look into this. I have a ton of faith in Kevin and Allison, and, you know, candidly, it's your guys' time that is probably the premium on this. So I would just say, you know, respectful to the businesses, I think, you know, worrying about what it says in the newspapers and what businesses are thinking, I worry about what the residents think, I worry about, you know, people thinking about the safety of tractor-trailers that are rolling through our, excuse me, our town. So I would just say, totally in favor of it, I'm not, you know, thrilled about this, let's get it done in six months. If it takes us a year to do it right, then that's what it takes. These aren't big tax generators warehouses, nobody wants Wallingford filled with warehouses. Talking about manufacturing, you're talking about high revenue taxes, fine, but they're low-paying jobs, I just, I'm completely kind of off to the side on the notion of, let's get it done in six months. If we can, I think it's great. I think it will, but I hope there's an opportunity or some wiggle room if we aren't able to, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joan Munger, 15 Valley View Drive, Wallingford. I just would like to publicly express my disappointment in the timing of this moratorium. I am totally in favor of it. I agree that warehousing is just too much right now in Wallingford, and we do want, we don't want warehouses, and we don't want them in residential areas. We fought five years, the residents of the neighborhoods near Five Research Parkway. We fought five years, the residents of the neighborhoods near five Research Parkway, and a month after you approve a warehouse, you talk about a moratorium. We're residents of this town and we were here at every meeting and we wrote and spoke and looked into this and this is very disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll bring it back to the commission, see what the commission has any other comments or what they'd like to do. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my question would be if we were to pass this moratorium with a six-month limit, that does not prevent us from extending that?
No, we could extend if we, if you vote on to extend it.
Yeah. Here's my concern with that arbitrary time limitation is that my feeling was that I have a specific recollection when we were reviewing the initial revisions, that there was a push, they set a deadline for approving those revisions. And I, at the time, it struck me as a little odd because I thought, you know, it should take us whatever it takes us to get it right. And there was a push to, I think, pass those revisions so that it could be over and everybody could know what they were. And part of me thinks, you know, why set a, why set a deadline? I mean, obviously, we want to, what's more important is that we get it right, not that we, not that we get it passed. And I think if we set deadlines, we're just setting ourselves up for another failure. And I agree that if I were one of those neighbors in that neighborhood, I would be pretty upset right now and I get that. And I don't want, the last thing I would want is to repeat that. That's, so I'm in favor of the moratorium. I think it takes us what it takes us. Obviously, we want to get it done as quickly and as efficiently as possible, but we also want to get it done right. And so I really don't see the need for a deadline, but that's just, that's just my feeling on it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I agree with, you know, my fellow commissioners here. Absolutely want to get it right. That's without a doubt, want to get it right. And again, I think this is a fairly complex issue that is going to take a lot of time. And, you know, based on the last application, you know, there was a document that I came across and I'm sure a few others did about how New Jersey, the state of New Jersey, set up, you know, the Warehouse Capital of America, I guess, set up their standards and practices for warehousing in New Jersey and it's quite involved. And, you know, it does look at the balance between business needs and the residents. And again, I think that we missed the target on our last approval as far as, you know, looking at the residents' needs. I do think we need to put a stake in the ground, though, as far as the date. And the date is flexible. If we don't have, if we're not working towards a date, then things seem to drag, you know, they're just going to drag out. And it is, you know, again, as Tom Planner said, we can always, you know, extend the date if we need to, but just to say it again with Mr. Heinz and Mr. Parent, want to get it right, want to get it right for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fitzsimmons?
I agree with all prior speakers, you know, certainly, we definitely want to get it right. I do want to mention regarding the moratorium, the reason I was asking the question to the town planner. As you know, we all serve the public, we serve the town, you know, we, you know, we have to be fair to the property owners, we have to be fair to the abutters. By putting a start date and an end date, that's what's legally required, you know. I'm thinking, I was thinking as you were talking, Commissioner Heinz, you know, when the state passed the marijuana bill, law, you know, that said, okay, towns could allow this now, you know, we very quickly put a moratorium on to allow us time to draft a reg and then, you know, restrict it and say it's not allowed in Wallingford. So, you know, I think if I could, and you all know me well enough, I kind of, you know, let me tell you how, let me tell you how I think, you know, it could go, is that at first workshop, we might say, okay, the moratorium doesn't affect these zones and we start releasing it in zones while we still work on it. That's just one person's opinion, but I do think to a property owner who wants to do something, who's in a zone that is industrial, that currently allows warehousing, it is fair for us to put a end date, which could be shortened or lengthened, as long as we work to, you know, work towards the end of, obviously, addressing and reviewing the regs. Warehousing is a huge topic in most towns, most planning and zoning, most property is that, because people aren't building corporate headquarters anymore, they're building warehouses. So, you know, in Planning Magazine, that's what they always talk about, so, you know, we're no different than any other community, so I agree, let's get it right and let's get it done. So I'll be supporting this moratorium.
Any other commissioners? Do we feel like we can act on this?
Yes.
All right, so first, I call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the public hearing on the proposed text amendment to add section six point three five that would enact a townwide moratorium on warehousing and warehouse distribution uses.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Motion carries. Thank you. Do I hear Commissioner Fitzsimmons?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the commission approve a text amendment to add six, section six point three five to the Town of Wallingford zoning regulations entitled Moratorium on Warehousing Throughout the Town of Wallingford, Connecticut because it allows the town and the Planning and Zoning Commission and any interested parties to review any potential changes or additions to the current Town of Wallingford Planning and Zoning Regulations. The moratorium is to be effective no sooner than February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three and the proposed end date would be a six-month window ending at or near July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, starting with Commissioner Heinz?
Yes, to approve.
Cohen?
Yes.
Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
Parent?
Yes.
And yes. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Out to the town planner, we have bond release and reductions. Kevin, you have anything there?
That bond will not be released.
Okay, don't have to worry about that. How about the annual report?
Sure, I can just go over the, the high notes if you'd like. I think you've been involved in doing most of this, so I don't know if you have any questions about it or not. We hope to, hopefully in the next coming year, talk about redoing the signed regulations as they are currently not constitutional in nature. Hopefully discussing accessory apartments, warehousing, minimum parking requirements, looking at the plan of conservation and development. And we're currently also working on a draft of the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan with SCROG. So that's currently in the works as well. I don't know if you've had any other comments or questions regarding the annual report?
If you take out the warehouse, twenty twenty-two, there wasn't that much.
Yeah, no. Lot of small stuff, mostly text amendments. There was a lot of approved square footage, but, yeah.
Yeah.
More multifamily units than usual, so.
Any commissioners have any comments on this? All right. You're on a roll, go for it. Administrative approvals?
Any questions on those or comments?
Any commissioners have anything on that?
Then I also included the quarterly newsletter from the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies. There is one update I would like you to be aware of. The new law requires charging facilities for electric cars in commercial and new residential development, so as of January first, all new construction of commercial and multi-unit residential developments with thirty or more parking spaces must include electric vehicle charging stations for electric vehicles and at least ten percent of the parking spaces, but we may require more than ten percent if we feel that is necessary.
Are they requiring where they have to be or there's no guidance on that, right?
There isn't much guidance and it's unclear as to, you know, what's considered commercial as opposed to light industrial, so that may be something that needs to be, you know, discussed if we have an application in front of us, that's new construction.
Got it.
And...
The ZBA was canceled?
Correct, yep.
Sorry.
I have a question on the newsletter. So Public Act twenty twenty, twenty-five dash twenty-two, twenty-two dash twenty-five, are you going to review our regs and propose additions to our regs to reflect that new state law?
I may, I'm working on a bunch of, a bunch of text amendments to reflect state statutes right now because there's a, there's a bunch of different ones even from last year that took effect, such as character has to be taken out. So I may do a one all-inclusive sort of text amendment to include that.
Could we just do that in a workshop when we do the warehouse?
We can if we have enough time. I believe we want, the Law Department also wants to discuss reasonable accommodations as part of that warehouse, or part of the workshop, sorry, and reasonable accommodations and minimum parking requirements, so I don't know how much time we'll have to discuss further, but, you know, if you think you have time and you want to do a four-hour workshop, something like that, then that's up to you, but we could do multiple workshops.
Okay.
It's not a necessity, some of the language is very, very old that doesn't comply with the statute, so.
How about the ZBA notice for February twenty-second?
I didn't, it wasn't attached.
Yeah, it wasn't one attached.
Oh, I apologize. Maybe she wasn't ready with it yet when the packets went out. I will send that to you electronically.
Okay. Is there anything else? Commissioners? Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, just, just one comment. You know, I attended the SCROG meeting last week and, you know, we have the education requirement and I believe March eleventh is an all-day session where three of the four hours will be covered with that and I think Mr. Pigini sent out info on that. I did hear that that one-year requirement to get it done may be extended. So, but anyway, just, that's the announcement. Thank you.
And I think I sent some additional links to, like, there's some land use training online as well, so if you want to do something for free, you necessarily don't have to pay for and sit through, they have some classes on there, so just let me know if you're looking for any training opportunities and I could try to find something that may fit your schedule better, but there are certain requirements for certain topics, so if you need any help finding anything, let me know and I'll try to guide you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice. Motion carries. We are closed.